First item is to tell you that we are recording the meeting as we are required to by state law. So if you want to make a comment, please raise your hand so we can recognize you and say your name for the benefit of the public who might be listening in. Now, let's start with the approval of the minutes to thank everybody received. Do I have a motion?
Hi.
Hi, Sierra.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Hold on, favor. Let's just, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Next item is the annual visit from our beleaguered investment advisor. I think everyone is pretty well aware of what has happened in the stock market and investment world. So we'll just ask Michael to give us his insights into particulars for the library, please, Michael.
Great. Thank you for the introduction Cynthia, and good to see you all and hope everyone is healthy and safe and hunkered down. Before I jump in Cynthia, about how much time would you like me to take?
Just five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. Great. So I will dive right in then. So as Cynthia mentioned, it's been a very challenging first four months of the year, with most of that difficult period occurring in the month of March, when we saw equity markets decline by about 35% over the course of 16 days, during mid, middle of March to end of March, and then had staged a recovery last week of March through April, although global markets are still down in the neighborhood of 12% or so. The good news is, is that the library's endowment is allocated both to stocks and bonds, and we maintain a relatively conservative position in our bond portfolios. We don't invest in anything that is lower credit. The portfolio maintains a AA+ credit rating. So I'll just walk through the allocation of the portfolios as they stand today, and then can share a little bit about what our perspective is in terms of going forward from here, and both in terms of the economy and then the markets as well. So we've traditionally allocated 60% to stocks, 40% to bonds. During the first quarter of this year, we rotated into a more conservative position of 50% stock, 50% bonds, so we were able to avoid the full brunt of the equity market decline. We are actually also keeping a balance of cash, enough so that we have cash on hand to sustain at least a year of the endowment's spending. So we withdraw from there in the case of any spending needs prior to utilizing any of the securities in the portfolio, which will work to your advantage as things continue to recover. So right now roughly 50% stock, 50% bond. Again, the bonds are investment grade. We're not speculating there at all. The aggregate credit rating in the portfolio is AA+, and the duration is about four years. On the stock side, we're overweight to US large cap companies, so about 65% of the portfolio is in US S&amp;P 500 companies. We do have an allocation to international stocks, as well as a small allocation to emerging stocks, and we believe that blend creates the best risk-return profile over time. So going forward, our feeling is that we are very encouraged by the support and stimulus provided by the Fed and from Congress. We think that that's why the market has recovered to the extent that it has. But the reopening of the economy and the return to normalcy will likely be uneven. You'll see some industries get back to work and get back to resuming normal activity sooner rather than later, and you'll see other industries and companies struggle a bit more. It's our job to invest the portfolio accordingly with that environment as a backdrop. So our expectation is that we will see a continued recovery, but the markets will likely take at least 12 to 18 months, the equity markets that is, to recover the high highs of mid-February of this year. I think I'm at my five-minute mark there. I'm going to take any questions or answer anything that might be top of mind for all of you. Alan, call it in there.
Hi, Alan Johnson. Where do we stand? I see on, this is a current value of 926,860. Where do we stand December 31st?
December 31st, let's see.
I could...
Just bear with me here.
I have the two numbers, Pam Southworth, I have the two numbers. Hodge was 400 and Minor was 660.
Thank you Pam, I'm just...
So 406, what's the total of the two?
1,000,21...
Yeah, one, actually the grand total is 1,060,517.
So that's... Not a terrible haircut, frankly. A pretty good haircut, but you know. I think your outlook for the future is somewhat optimistic. I think, you know, it held up quite well.
Yes, it's not an insignificant amount of money that the portfolio is down this year, but it's thus so than the market. And the way you have, we have you positioned, I would say... Or fixed income than we typically carry.
Sierra, you're making some funny noises.
Oh yeah.
I was hearing what everyone was laughing about. Sorry about that.
Mike, could you repeat what you last said, the last sentence, please?
The way, the way we have you positioned is cautious.
Right, very conservative.
We've got more of an overweight to fixed income assets, which are much more conservative, an overweight to cash to sustain any future near-term spending, to allow for the stocks to recover the losses that they've had over the course of the first four months of the year.
Thank you.
This is Cynthia. I just wanted to reiterate. I think you said that our cash position is such that we can cover our normal draw for a year without having to sell anything?
That's correct. Yep, and that's something that we put in place at the beginning of the year prior to the decline. So we've had that cash position since late last year, actually.
Well, I think we all are very happy with Bernstein's management, with his very active management in keeping us on track. It's a tough environment for raising money. So that's very terrific, and we thank you and congratulate you on your new baby as well. Very well done.
Cynthia, appreciate that. Okay.
Any other questions from anyone? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Very much.
You all.
Thank you.
Take care.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, this is Cynthia again. We have consent agenda reports as we normally do, which cover the state of our finances and our spending, and a very excellent report from our director with all of the activities.
Long report.
Long report she and her staff have been doing to continue to serve the public while the library is closed to visitors. We certainly commend you on all of those activities and keeping on top of everything. It's, I think, it's really a very good job.
Thank you. It's been a learning experience.
Imagine. Okay, Liz is here from the Friends. What would you like to share with us?
Hi, how is everybody tonight? Yeah, I have three quick items. The first is that our annual meeting that's usually held in February has had some low attendance because people are out of town. So the Friends moved to have the annual meeting changed to the fourth Monday in January, when more people should be here. And so that's item number one. Item number two is that our treasury report is doing pretty well, and we actually did get over $3,000 from giving local.
Wow.
So that was kind of nice to have. And then as far as other fundraising, our next chapter is, you know, closed, of course, but we are starting to discuss some business continuity plans so that we can prioritize the safety of all guests and volunteers. One of the ways things they were thinking about is having a very, several phases with a soft opening, where we might have reservations and appointments for the book dealers first, where they only come in one at a time. And then maybe next we would go into a phase where we would just invite the Roxbury residents in, again with timed appointments. And all of this, of course, is in limbo until we learn about what the government and the health mandates are going to be in the future. So it's a little, but discussions are starting on how to try to get the fundraising going again. And that's all I had.
Very thoughtful. Do we know libraries included and what's opening on the 20th?
I don't know that.
I'd like to know too. I, the state, do you want me to, should I go into this now or wait? But anyway, I guess I'll go into it now. So the State Library has released some phase-in plans for opening up the various public libraries around the state. There's no guidance as to when those phases would go into effect. So I've been reaching out to our neighboring libraries, Woodbury, Southbury, obviously the Gunn and Bridgewater, to try to get an idea of what their schedules are looking like. From what I can tell, it seems that most libraries are going to start around the 20th, 21st, doing curbside pickup, which we're already doing. We'll just keep doing that until we get some more guidance from the state about it's okay to open up our doors to people. I did hear from Barbara Henry that they're going to be keeping Town Hall closed until the 1st. Which I hope it's okay that I said that. So, but we will definitely only be doing contact-free pickup through June 1st, just to stay in line with what's going on here in town. Beyond that, it's kind of a wait-and-see.
Yeah, I... So the town right now, it would appear, is making up its own mind. This is not state-guided that we know of yet?
No, and everything that I've seen from the governor hasn't, I mean, it's mentioned like salons and some other businesses, but it doesn't say, you know, specifically not essential or one thing or the other. So I guess it's more open to our interpretation of what he deems okay to open. We are, I've been trying to get some supplies for reopening. So all the guidelines say that there needs to be hand sanitizer for people coming in and out, and there need to be cleaning wipes for people coming in, and we don't have that stuff yet. So, you know, no matter what, we can't reopen our doors until we've got all those supplies. I've got stuff for staff, but I've been, I can't, I can't get hand sanitizer dispensers and I can't get cleaning wipes. So I reached out to Barbara to see if she can help us acquire some of those things. And I know that there's, Billy O'Mation is working with some of the other consortia to try to do bulk purchasing of that kind of stuff. But I don't know when that's going to come through.
Well, it does seem from at least Art O'Neill's daily, very informative emails that the governor at the correct point will be specific.
Yeah.
So we're, we do well to wait. Everybody agrees.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just a little, a little too early. That's what I think.
Yeah.
I listened in on the selectmen's meeting last week, and they've, they're exploring how, how they want to open Town Hall, whether they... I think the, kind of the vague thought was that they're going to open it up, that the workers can be there, but they weren't going to let the public have the run of the, run of the place. They haven't, they haven't worked out any details on it, or hadn't worked out. They were going to work on that after the meeting.
Yeah, and so that's, that's kind of where we are too.
Can I ask a question?
It seems, it seems like we should stay in line with the other local libraries because given that Roxbury only has six reported cases, we don't want to be the first library to open and have there be a draw of people from elsewhere to Roxbury for library services?
Yeah.
So, you know, it would be great to stay in line with Town Hall, but I might have more of an eye on staying in line with the other libraries.
Yeah, and, and I think until the delivery system gets up and running, every library that I've talked to that's doing some kind of contact-free pickup, they're limiting it to their town only, which we're doing as well. So to try to prevent that kind of thing from happening, people coming in from Washington or wherever to borrow our items. And I think that's what we're doing.
I have a concern that, I know some businesses and other things are concerned for older staff members getting in a mixed scene. And my observation is the staff at the library, they're not kids. And I have a concern. I mean, they are far more vulnerable than somebody 25 or 30 years old. And I don't know how we protect them and have the public in there, and it has to be given some thought, I think.
Yeah, definitely. You're right, you're right Alan, but except, except there are younger people with pre-existing conditions that may even be more vulnerable. And that's a matter of confidentiality, so...
Yeah, and that's why...
You know, it's very, it's very hard to get the absolute plan. I think we have to be cautious all around.
I absolutely agree, but I, you know, I don't want to put, I know, I'm, I mean, I, geez, I went to the dump this week, and every single, not a person who went to the dump had a mask on.
Really?
Except me.
That's interesting, because when I go, there seems to be, man, you know, I try to go and I don't see too many cars.
In the past, I mean, last week when I went, or two weeks ago when I went, everybody was wearing masks, staff and all, but I was the only one there.
Well.
And that...
You can't make people do what they don't want to do. That's the problem, yeah.
Well, I think, basically Mary, Mary's point is very well taken. And what we want to do is, we want the Friends to be able to understand with us what we're doing as we gradually reopen whatever the guidelines are. And I appreciate what you're saying, Alan. Be mindful that Teresa has been dealing with this already for two months.
Right, right.
With the, with the public, and she's dealt with, with our staff to keep them working for the library, but safely. And I have every time, every opportunity to do that.
I just want to reinforce, that's the, that's the only way we can do it. I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Well, are...
Then it's got to be a sign on the front door. It's not an option. You just say, "No mask, no entry," you know. You know, this is not a, to my way.
Mary, did you, Mary, do you have a comment?
Mary Schenke, do we have a sense of particular staff members being concerned about returning to work? And are we prepared to accommodate people's individual feelings about the safety of returning to work?
Teresa, you want to pick up?
Yeah, we definitely have had those conversations while we've been closed to the public. I've been in contact with all of our staff, and it's been up to them. If they feel comfortable coming in on a staggered basis, they can. If they don't, they don't. And one of our staff members does not feel comfortable coming in. She hasn't been, she's just been working from home. Everyone else has been coming in on a limited basis with the understanding, "If you don't feel comfortable, please just work from home." But we are, you know, we're keeping it only one person here at a time with no overlap, so. Also trying to think of, like, what's going to get people through this on a, on a mental, on a mental level? And keeping people happy and occupied and, yeah.
I think there's a lot of levels that we're going to have to address. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. This has not been a short-term thing. This is a long time. And it does affect people. It does affect people. You're right.
So we're just trying to balance that, and as we reopen, that's going to be certainly the main part of the conversation with each of the staff members.
Perfect.
I think that's the only way to go. And I think you should just stay the course, and then people, people got ants in their pants. They really want to get out, but you can't do that. I don't like wearing a mask, but, you know. You know, I want to spend a little more time on this earth, and I don't want to just, you know, to be macho and go out there and get sick.
I think we all agree. So let's move on to our agenda. And we'll be, we'll be living this every day and thinking about it and learning from Teresa what she's learned to help the library and the Friends do the right thing by the public that we serve.
No pressure.
No pressure, there's no problem. I think you were due for a vacation, right Teresa?
Well, vacation, for vacation this year.
Let me quickly tell you that our annual fund drive, I'm informed, is almost up to $45,000.
Beautiful.
That's a good number in a year where we could really use it. And we have an action item. This is exciting. Hey, Teresa would like to propose to us an amendment to the patron behavior policy. Teresa, would you please explain what you'd like to do?
Yep, I just wanted to add one line to our patron behavior policy, and I think almost everyone around the state and public libraries is doing something similar. A line says, "Patrons must adhere to local, state, and federal health guidelines." So if that, that would, I hope, cover any kind of requirements for masks inside the library, if we ask them to, if they're sick, staying home and not coming in, that kind of thing.
Right.
People to leave if we have to, if they're sneezing all over the place.
Yeah, I agree, and I think it's a good time to do it, you know. You know, you would think that people would do that on their own, but I think it's a good time to make a point of that, is my opinion.
Well, it certainly seems that we would address the issues, begin to, that we've been talking about this evening. So essentially, we need a motion to accept this amendment and a vote.
Some moved.
Thank you. Second from Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? None. Thank you Teresa. So we're, we've got that covered.
Good idea.
Okay. We want to talk about the operating and capital budgets for the coming fiscal year, which starts July 1. I'm going to ask Pam and Teresa to do some reporting for us on this, please.
Okay, so at our January meeting, we discussed what we were going to ask the town for, for an operating budget and for a capital budget, and we found out about a month ago that our ask has been approved from the capital for Minor, the operating for Minor. Teresa, do you want to discuss the Hodge portion of the capital?
Yeah, so, so as you all recall, the Hodge capital was a very big ask, covering a lot of things. And so there was, there was a lot of discussion. We met with the Board of Finance a couple times, along with our two architects. And we got approval for, I think it's $25,000, to go towards a new furnace for the Hodge, because the furnace is broken, a new well, yay, for water at the Hodge, and to work on the dehumidification of the crawl space. So we got approval for those three things, which is wonderful.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the, the understanding is that moving forward, we'll, we'll try to find some grant funding and some fundraising for the other things that need to get done there at the Hodge, but it's a great start for us.
It is.
Wonderful.
Okay, yeah, we recognized again the town's support for the Minor by granting us the request, which was, I think, a little over 2% increase in line with the town.
Just under 2%?
Okay, just under 2%. And also the support for the Hodge, Teresa's right to say that we are, we are tasked with seeing other ways of raising financial support for the endeavor. We also want to invest, we want to investigate how the town has supported the Hodge in the past. I'm recalling a $45,000 price tag on the roof, which was done five, six years ago. And we're going to review some of the thinking that went into that decision, because I think we have a relatively new Board of Finance, and it would probably be good for them to know some of the prior thinking that got us where we are. But this $25,000 is a great shot in the arm and get the most critical problems addressed, I hope, in July and August. Okay, schedule looks pretty good. Teresa, you really just about covered the possible opening hours. Did you have any other comments on that topic?
No, not right now. Just to reiterate, well, we're going to keep business as usual through June 1st, as usual as it is right now. through June 1st, as usual as it is right now. And then June 1st, we'll, we'll see how our, see what our neighbors are up to and go from there.
Okay, terrific. The only other item that we have in front of us is just to, to bring you up to date on the, the nice topic of improvements in the contemplation garden.
Yay!
Okay, we got, we got additional stones added where the drip line used to cause muddy waters there, and some grass seed. And Jeff has, in fact, finished the cleaning of the labels. Yeah, I'm hoping that if it's open meeting time, we might be able to meet out there or at least visit it in June.
That's perfect, and we can sit six feet apart. I love it.
We could do. So I will ask you, any other business? All right then.
What's the record?
Is it a record? And motion to adjourn?
I move, Pam Southworth.
I second, okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 I would like to, I'd like to say one last thing. I can't wait to see everybody in person. Keep well, and can't wait to see everybody.
Thanks, Joan.
You too.
Okay, everybody, take care.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.